Good afternoon and thank you for attending the City Council Meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, August the 5th, 2019. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda. There are no additions or deletions. Your pleasure with the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Kraus to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Deitch. Questions or discussions with the agenda or the motion? There are none question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to the approval of the minutes and we have the regular City Council Meeting of July 15.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Buller to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Questions or discussions with regard to the minutes? There are none question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Minutes for July 15th are approved. And then we have the minutes of the July 22nd Special City Council Meeting.
Motion?
Motion by Counselor Deitch to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and minutes for the special meeting of July 22nd are approved. Thank you. Move to the transfers and the payment of claims and we have transfers to the General Fund 101 from the Lodging and Tax Fund of $627.68. Accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls, $333,050.94. Airport Commission claims of $97,630.65. Airport Commission Terminal Project Phase 2 claims of $130,245.2. Runway Reconstruction Project Phase 1 claims of $99,740. Runway Reconstruction Project Phase 2 claims of $104,720.36. Runway Reconstruction Project Phase 3 claims of $11,334.75. Your pleasure with the transfers and the payment of claims.
Motion?
Motion by Counselor Deitch to adopt the resolution.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Questions or discussion on the motion or the transfer or the payment of claims? There are none question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted approving the transfer and the payment of claims. Thank you. We'll go to the audience. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council at this time? And if not, there's another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you. We'll move to new business and on Wednesday, August the 7th at 6:00 PM, Mayor Don Ness, a former mayor of Duluth, will be with us in a presentation and discussion at the American Inn. Thank you for sponsoring that and hopefully we'll have good turnout. Any questions or concerns with regard to that? Thank you. We'll move to item two under new business, request from the Kooching Economic Development Authority Board for a letter of support to the Kooching County Planning and Zoning Commission, supporting the county board approvals for a proposed rural cold weather testing facility. Paul, would you please come forward?
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, I've been working with a gentleman that is looking at developing a private sector gentleman that is looking to develop a test facility.
Take the microphone. Get it close.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I've been working with a gentleman, actually a former Jaguar Land Rover individual that is looking at developing a large scale test facility here in Kooching County. I think it represents a significant opportunity and investment within the county because of the size of the parcel needed for the type of activity there. He's looking at a 290 acre parcel just south of the junction, 71 and County Road 79. It's currently zoned agricultural and so he's going through the process of what county's planning and zoning to have it rezoned commercial and then to get a conditional use to allow for testing activity. This will be a seasonal endeavor, but it will again represent a significant investment over $1.5 million just to get the facility operational. There'll be five, at least four now, five seasonal jobs. And what I like about it is it complements the existing testing that we're doing here, but it doesn't compete because it's a different type of, it's more of a dynamic testing, brakes, ABS, adaptive cruise control, that kind of stuff. So, and the other thing I like about it is he could be in a number of different communities in northern Minnesota, Michigan or Wisconsin, but he wants to be in Kooch. So, and he's a known quantity. I've known him for over eight years. He's got 20-plus years in the industry, so he's a bona fide partner in this. So, the sale is contingent on this rezoning and just knowing how that rezoning process goes and, but this again will, I don't, I don't believe it'll have an impact on the neighbors. By the very nature of this, they like security. There'll be a lot of fencing in Birmingham. They want to keep a low profile and as Craig noted, he wants to be a good neighbor. So, looking for some support from, from the city council and also the city of Little Fork. Again, I think the impact on the county will be significant. He's going to bring a lot of customers, new customers to our area. So with that...
Questions for Paul with regard to the request for a letter of support to the county Planning and Zoning Commission with regard to this cold weather testing facility? Counselor Deitch, please.
Be a benefit to International Falls. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Drowba?
Not a question, more of just a statement. I, I know that there's always a push for economic development and you know, it's one of the buzzwords we hear all the time. But I think that this is a testament to building relationships. Obviously, he was here or being part of the Jaguar group that's been testing with us and the relationship with KETA, the relationship with International Falls, with the area having members of our county board and our city council working with, with these groups, I think really show the, the support that we have as a community and I would definitely support and make the motion of, of a letter of support for the project.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Drowba and a second by Counselor Kraus to have the city send a letter to the Kooching County Planning and Zoning Commission in support of the proposed cold weather testing facility. Further discussion or questions with regard to the motion or the project? And Paul, maybe my understanding, and KETA had already adopted a motion in support of this and you're looking for the City of International Falls, the City of Little Fork, as you said, to, to support this. My understanding that they're looking at a track in addition to some buildings, is that kind of what the...
Yeah. Again, it's dynamic testing, so it will be a large oval, but it will, there won't be any hard surfaces. So, the impacts again will be minimal. There's even to wetlands, he found a parcel that did not have a great deal of wetland impacts. So he's going to put a large snow packed oval. There'll be a oval, there'll be a ice circle. It's a variety of different courses that, that, that this type of testing will require. But, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Counselor Buller, please.
Start this fall yet?
Yes. He'd like to start and he'd like to use as many local contractors and, as he can.
There are none question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and a letter of support will be sent to the Kooching County Planning and Zoning.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Item number three under new business is presentation of the Recreation Commission Annual Report and Budget. And Bill Mason was in Hibbing. In fact, I think he just departed Hibbing a short time ago, so he's not going to make the meeting this evening. And so, there's three of us that serve on the, on the Rec Commission and so we should be able to present the, excuse me, the budget for the Recreation Commission and start with the, Counselor Drowba, you're, just finished your term as Chair of the Commission and...
Yeah.
Okay.
I expected him to be here. I didn't realize we were gonna do this. So there are minor changes to the budget coming into this year. Actually...
I think primarily the focus, if I remember correctly, there's a, there's a decline in the...
Enrollment.
Enrollment at the school, which is going to take down the levy that the school district, and I don't know what the changes in the dollars are there. Last year, we took in...
Well, last year we took in, from the, the school district, the levy was $85,000. This year, it looks like it's going to be $82,000. So the city funding ended up going up an additional $1,000, but then they cut money out of the budget so that ultimately it would balance. Last year's budget, total budget was $219,500 and this year it's $220,800. So, the budget is up a little over $1,000, but there are funds that were carried over so that the, if it does go a little over budget, there was monies set aside that would be able to cover that. Besides that, there wasn't any major changes of the budget except for the monies that were came, coming from the levy.
I don't have anything, Dan.
I think the only thing I would add, Counselor Drowba, Counselor Kraus, is that I think when we started the budget process, we had hoped to be able to do some of the things that were brought forth at the Recreation Roundtable or the Town Hall Meeting that we had, especially in the area of trying to get more coaches for some of the activities that we have. And, and given that the dollars are going to be less from the school district, the city's going to end up helping with $1,000 more or being asked to, to approve $1,000 more for the, for the budget for next year. And then, and we're just not going to be able to see some of the improvements that we had hoped to make.
The financial improvements.
Financial improvements, right. All right. Counsel's pleasure with, with the, the budget.
I saw moved.
Motion by Counselor Buller to approve the, the budget as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Drowba. Questions or discussions with regard to the, the budget or the recreation? And we do intend to keep all activities that have been in the past, so. And I think there's, can I call on you to, on the young players football, and I'm thinking of fifth and sixth grade, are we moving to flag football? I know we had a discussion about that.
Yes. And we're adding, it's my understanding they're adding fourth grader, sorry. My understanding that they're adding fourth graders, so it'll be fourth, fifth and sixth grade will be flag football instead of contact football and it's co-ed.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Kraus. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and the budget for the Recreation Commission is approved for the year 2019 and 2020, I think it is, isn't it? Because it starts July 1st.
Yeah.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item number four under new business. And that is the approval of a one to four day temporary on sale liquor license application for the Knights of Columbus, Council 1540, in connection with the St. Thomas fundraiser event on September the 28th. And that would be at the St. Thomas Aquinas Hall, 810 Fifth Street. Counsel's pleasure with the approval of that one to four day temporary on sale liquor license.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Deitch to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Kraus. Questions or discussion? There are none question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes on that motion and the motion carries and the temporary on sale liquor license for the Knights of Columbus is approved. Thank you. Move to item five under new business. That is an application for an exempt permit from the International Falls Figure Skating Club to conduct a raffle with the drawing to be held March the 22nd of the year 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba to approve.
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Discussion on the motion or the raffle? There are none question?
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and application for the raffle is approved. Thank you. Item number six is to approve the development agreement for the demolition of property. And the council in a committee of the whole meeting this afternoon discussed the potential development agreement for a piece of property. And I'm trying to remember the 920, no.
723.
723, thank you. Ninth Street. And the council has declined to have further, have a developer's agreement and so we're asking the city attorney to continue forth with the filing of the papers with the court to have the property cleaned up. I don't know, do we need council action Administrator? Because I mean, the council had previous action to have that...
If the council wishes to have an affirmative motion declining the offer to donate the property to the city, might be official action on that and proceeding. Might be appropriate to have that because it was a request to donate it.
Our, our understanding, city attorney, is that the property owner contacted you with regard to asking for negotiation or some type of an agreement?
That's correct. And we had discussions about donation. I contacted Administrator Anderson and we sought out, there were two potential interested buyers, if it was donated, that the city could sell it back to after the demolition of the home. And so that's what was under consideration.
I don't know if the council wants to enter into any further discussion with regard to process, but I think we just move forward with, with filing of the papers and, unless the council wants to make enough, make a motion to decline the offer for a development agreement.
Motion's already there for paperwork, so...
It's already, yes, we've made the motion to file, so I think that's where it sits. Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll move to item seven under the new business and that's consider the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission's request for $5,000 to prepare a transportation plan for the City of International Falls Rainier in Kooching County with regard to the design of Trunk Highway 11 coming into the City of International Falls on the west side. That project would be scheduled for the year 2026, but they would like to, Mindot would like to start the process and they have engaged the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission to, to do that. So the request is before the council for $5,000 from the city, $5,000 from the county and $2,500 from Rainier. Counsel's pleasure with that?
I saw moved.
Motion by Counselor Buller to approve. Second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion or questions with regard to the motion? Counselor Kraus, please.
Mr. Mayor, you said west side, did you mean east side?
No, west side. It would be starting out at the 332, where 332 comes in on Highway 11 and would carry to the city to 12th Avenue is my understanding where the project would terminate in the city here. There may be some additional work on Highway 11 East. I don't know that at this time. I only know the portion that was going to be in the City of International Falls from County Road 332 to 12th Avenue. Hopefully the highway will hold up till then, but it's getting fairly rough. Further questions or discussions with regard to the project or the planning process?
Mayor? You may want to add that Mindot's got $47,200 in it and ARDC also has $20,000 in it.
Yes.
So it wasn't just us.
Yes, it wasn't just...
We're, we're pretty small compared to what they're contributing.
Thank you. Counselor Deitch, please.
I guess they need a little more clarity on exactly, other than the $5,000, what they're asking, what, what we would be involved with.
I think very similar to the Highway 53 project is that they're going to have a series of meetings with the, the cities and the county with regard to the improvements because it'll come through the unorganized area, kind of what's known as paper makers, will hit the city limits out near the Menards store and then carry on to 12th Avenue is my understanding of the, the planning area that's going to be included. And so it appears that there'll be a number of meetings that will be held to review what the changes would be. I just believe from what we have there now that it's going to be a much less impact than Highway 53, that we probably kind of seen the, the limits of, of development with regard to the highway. The only thing I could see that they would, if they ever wanted to do something different would be to put curb all the way and I don't know that they're going to want to do that. So I think it'll stay the, as it hits the city limits, it'll be the five lanes that we have now, at least unless someone proposes to take it down to less lanes, that would be the only change that might happen, but... Counselor Drowba, please.
So then my question is, is what, what do we get out of the study after it's done? After this is all completed, is this a scope of work that we would like to see done?
Then they will take and make the improvements to the highway.
The Department of Transportation?
Yes.
And then this is $5,000 that goes into our 2020 budget?
Yes.
January.
Further discussion? There are none question?
No.
Aye.
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 And I would vote yes. There being four for the motion and one opposed, the motion carries and the approval is given for the $5,000 for the transportation plan for Highway 11. Thank you. Move to item eight and that's approve the request for an extension of the municipal consent response for the Trunk Highway 53 improvement project scheduled in 2020 and City Administrator, do you want to update the council with regard to that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Council, we've had some conversations. The council might recall that we had meetings and received a letter back in April, I believe, actually May, May 21st, I believe it was, from Mindot. And as part of the state established, both in statute and in Minnesota rules processes, the city has 90 days to go through and consider the proposed project. They call it the municipal consent process and at the end of that 90 day period, we need to adopt a resolution indicating if we're supportive of the project or if we're not supportive of the project or if we're supportive of the project with conditional changes. And so as part of the process where we're at in terms of considering sales and use tax monies and when we're going to receive those and a variety of improvements that are proposed for the project, we've discussed extending that approval process. I did receive a voice message from a, the project engineer with Mindot and they indicated it is possible to extend it. So I'm proposing that the city council consider a 65 day extension from August 19th to October 23rd and that will give us more time to review the implications of the project and, and what changes we might want to see. Specifically, there's been a number of driveway accesses to existing business establishments that Mindot has reviewed at the request of the property owners. They've agreed to make changes to their initial proposal and leave driveways in that they had initially proposed to take out. I would say that the major matter that hasn't been resolved and needs to be considered further by the council and perhaps even getting more input on the part of the council members is, Mindot right now is proposing to take the stoplight out at Seventh Street and Highway 53 and not replace it. We've asked them to reconsider that. They've queried their other departments at Mindot and their determination is, is based on the traffic counts at that intersection. It doesn't meet any of the existing state warrants to justify keeping a stoplight there, a stoplight there or a signalized intersection, so they want to remove that. We asked the question, even if the city had proposed paying for that signalized intersection, can we retain it? And their answer was no. So that would be something that we want to work through further with the city council as well as public input as to how to address that issue as part of the municipal consent process. So in short, again, we're just asking to get approval from Mindot for a 65 day extension to Wednesday, October 23rd, which would push us just beyond the second meeting date in October to consider those issues.
Questions for the city administrator? Thank you for that recap, please. Counselor Buller?
Is this going to change the designing? Are they going to keep, keep designing yet or is this going to halt their, halt this stuff?
No, I think they're moving forward with the design. We had met with them a week or week and a half ago. They're at about the 30% design threshold, so the next point where we'll have a meeting and discussion will be when they reach about 60% design. I don't have a firm date on how, what the maximum time extension would be, but we think that's an appropriate time. And if we can respond earlier, we would like to do that so that we don't delay the project to any extent. Right now, they indicated that they'll be considering bid, bidding in March of 2020 and then letting bids, I believe, in April. And about the April timeframe is where they, they would want the local share contribution from the City of International Falls for the project. Construction would commence in 2020 and also into the construction season in 2021 with final landscaping work to be done as late as 2022.
And the estimated figure right now... And the estimated figure right now is about $1.5 million?
It is. It's, you know, it's ranging, it's preliminary numbers. It's anywhere from $1.005 to $1.008 for the local share. The total project cost is over $11 million, so the rest would be paid by Mindot.
And is there the requirement that the city have a public hearing or public meeting prior to doing the municipal consent?
Well, we had a public hearing back this spring on the municipal consent process. I don't believe that another one is necessary, but the city council, again, you know, with whatever our proposal is, I mean, we could schedule an informational meeting to seek further public input. I don't think that there's anything that might be well-advised to do that before we move forward, because it is a major project for our community, and ultimately, with whatever is approved is what we're going to live with for the next 25-plus years.
Yeah, I would certainly agree with you. I think we should have some type of a public information meeting, and especially because we heard from two local businesses that are very concerned with the loss of the signal light at 7th Street. I've also heard from citizens in that area who are very concerned. They just believe that that signal light is important both to their businesses and to citizens being able to access Highway 53 at that point. So the council's pleasure with the request for an extension of 65 days on the municipal consent. Motion by Councilor Buller?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the extension?
Mayor?
Please.
I would probably suggest that the authorizing motion directs staff to prepare a resolution with just some basic findings. We'd put it in resolution format instead of just a motion, and we can do that if the council moves forward with this motion, and I'd recommend that we do it in resolution form, though.
All right. Okay with the maker of the motion that we, that the city prepare a resolution on the municipal consent? And second? I guess I would like to also include in there that we would have a public meeting on the improvement prior to the end of the extension.
Extension, yes.
Before the council adopts the municipal consent.
Sure.
Okay. Capture that, Administrator, so both drafting of the resolution and a public meeting?
Got it.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and consent is requested. Thank you. Item number nine under new business is to approve a offer and appointment of Mr. Todd Ojala to the Information Systems Administrator position effective September 2019. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we had advertised to fill the position of a full-time Information Systems Administrator position. We did fill the position late last year. The person that we hired had accepted another position in the community, doing a little bit more with software development, which was an area of interest for them, so we've had a vacancy. The deputy city administrator, myself, interviewed two candidates. We had also considered doing a managed IT approach with a consulting firm or a vendor to assist us with our IT needs, but we really think it makes the most sense to have a staff person available on a day-to-day basis to assist with hardware issues, software concerns, meet directly with employees. And so after interviewing two candidates, we're recommending the appointment of Todd Ojala to the position. I've identified in the memo that I prepared for the city council some of his background. He's got roughly a dozen years. He's taught at a university level in social studies. He's got network engineer experience, network administrator experience, help desk experience. He has a pretty broad base of experience. He's a graduate of the International Falls High School, and he's currently residing in Florida. And we have an open effective date pending arrangements that he can make to relocate here. He'd like to do it as quickly as possible, and so I think we'd like, we're asking the council to go ahead and approve the hire with some flexibility in the actual start date, depending on what his logistic issues are that we have to resolve. But it won't be before the 23rd of August, and right now, he's anticipating a start date on September 9, but it needs to be flexible pending his move arrangements. So that's our recommendation, and we're hoping that the council can approve that by motion.
Counsel's pleasure, then, with the conditional offer and appointment of Todd Ojala to the Information Systems Administrator position?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Kraus?
Second.
Second by Councilor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the appointment? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried, and conditional offer is made. Thank you. Item number 10 is the approval of the license application from Apple Green Midwest LLC to operate the Freedom Value Number 61 and Freedom Value Number 62 stations effective August 22 of 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Drogba to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilor Buller? Questions?
Mayor?
Please.
Some additional information for the council. We're still, we have, this particular owner is a new owner. There's a property transfer that's just occurring, so the previous owner is assisting the new owners in the middle of all the information. Right now, we expected it last week with overnight delivery as of today at 2:30. We still haven't received it. So this approval we're envisioning will delegate and allow the deputy city administrator to move forward with the application process as soon as we receive all of the application materials. The majority of them are in, I believe it was the tobacco, and there was one other one that we didn't receive for both sites. So we're just pending getting that information, and once we get complete application materials, we'd like to move forward with it conditionally in that way.
So this would be for gas pumps and tobacco?
Yes, there's half a dozen of them. There's some convenience sales. I actually have a slip from staff. I, because of our earlier meeting, I don't have it in front of me, but.
Do we want to make the motion contingent upon receiving the information?
Yes.
Is that okay with the maker and the second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Kraus, please.
Chief Maston, any issues? It's tobacco, so we always like to ask. We're good?
Okay. Okay, further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And I would vote yes. Motion is carried and license approved contingent upon receiving the information. Thank you. Further, any other business under new business?
Mayor?
Please, Councilor Deech.
We had our citywide cleanup, as we're aware, several of us were working there. Very successful this year. I do believe we probably doubled the debris, let's call it, that we gathered other years. People were willing to bring their debris to us to dispose of. Everybody worked hand in hand. The mayor himself was out there loading garbage as we're driving around along with Larry, and it all worked perfect. Everything went fine, minor glitches, but nothing major.
Thank you. Further under new business? Move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator, please.
Briefly, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to advise the council that things are proceeding on schedule with the Department of Revenue and the sales and use tax. Again, they've reiterated that we'll be ready to go live, as they call it, on October 1, 2019. There's some additional information that we're awaiting from them, and we should receive sometime prior to September 20. One item would be is they have a local sales tax agreement that requires city council authorization, so when we get that form, we'll place that on a future agenda. And then there's some disclosure training, that staff that will be working with the information that's submitted with the reimbursements that we need to take. Right now, we're envisioning that would involve myself, the deputy city administrator, and the finance officer all taking that disclosure training to make sure that any private financial data would not be distributed to anybody that shouldn't see it. And so that's a requirement that the Department of Revenue has, and then they're also just seeking our primary contact and backup information for dispersing information back and forth through the state system. So we're moving forward, and again, we expect to be fully operational, and the sales tax starting to get collected effective October 1. Forms have been sent out to, I believe the number was 478. Forms were sent out to area businesses, informing them about the local sales and use tax, and then providing some general information and registering actually those departments. So that information was also sent out about July 26. So we're moving forward with that. Secondly, I received notification today from the Koochin County Public Health Department, and the council might recall that we asked them on a monthly basis to test the water quality at both Rainier Beach and City Beach, and the results for the testing in July came back, and both beaches had good test results, and the information or the data showed that we were well below the threshold for E. coli at both beaches, so they're both safe, and I just wanted the council to know about that. Other than that, I don't have anything I need to share unless the council has any questions to me.
Questions for the city administrator?
Thank you.
Thank you for your report. City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, moving forward with the demolition orders for Blight, and ICO had an attorney from Duluth file an answer to our order for their building, and they are contesting it, so it'll have to go through a trial, and it will not be handled in expedited process that the other two, the other two properties have not had a filing in opposition to it. So two, we'll be scheduling hearing dates on those, but the ICO building will require a trial. That's all I have.
Thank you. Go to the police monthly report. Chief Maston, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Posters. Monthly report for the police report for July. Last month, Officer Caston, a new part-time officer relocated to town, has begun his field training. We're happy to have him onboard. You see, we participated in a few different community engagement events. Additionally, during the month of July, I was fortunate enough to get a postboard audit, which I hadn't gone through before, so it was an interesting experience, but I'm pleased to say that our hiring practices, our policies and procedures and all that that they check and monitor passed without any issues. Statistically, for the month of July, we're pretty much similar to 2018. We had 523 calls for service, conducted 150 traffic stops, issued 34 citations, handled 25 medical assists, 13 arrests, and generated 109 new case reports. Also of note, I don't know if you guys got it in your packet or not, the news release from the Department of Public Safety. The Department of Public Safety is going around holding listening sessions in communities throughout Minnesota, and the purpose of that is to get community input on characteristics, traits, and hiring practices of police officers. So, you know, their goal there is to have community members contribute, give their opinions, and then see some plan of action going into effect, all in the building the trust and legitimacy in law enforcement hiring processes. So that will be held in International Falls on August 23 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the International Falls High School, if anybody's interested. And lastly, please don't forget, tomorrow is our third annual national night out. I hope to see you all over there from 4:00 to 7:00.
Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Maston, please? I guess I would lead it off, and first of all, congratulations on the postboard audit that they did. I don't know how extensive those are. I've never heard that we've had them before.
I've never seen one either.
And can you just give us a little briefing on, was it just hours? Was it a day?
It wasn't real lengthy, but Minnesota Postboard requires us to have certain policies and procedures, everybody across the state. We have to have certain hiring practices, background investigations, things of that nature on our new employees. So they come in to make sure you're checking out the boxes, getting everything right. Not so much to penalize you or anything, but to make sure that, you know, you're in compliance, and your agency and your city is not open to unnecessary liability.
Thank you. And then secondly, to the news release from the Department of Public Safety, and that's a Friday evening?
During the BASS tournament.
During the BASS tournament? That, to me, is just the.
It'd be very well-attended.
I'm surprised the Friday evening, that they would have, hold a session like that.
Mayor, you can see that they'll be in Duluth earlier in the day, so again, it's just probably trying to do the logistics, and maybe they want to participate in the BASS tournament activities that evening. I would point out that one of the things I would add to the chief's report is that our city and not all cities have civil service commissions, and so I'm going to try and extend this news release invitation to our three police civil service commission members so that, because they're involved in creating our, interviewing applicants and in creating the eligibility list that we use to make our police officer hires, so I'm going to make sure that they're aware of it, and hopefully, we can get at least one of them to attend on that Friday evening.
Thank you. That would be great. Again, further questions for Chief Maston? Thank you for, again, for the good work. Oh, Councilor Drogba, I'm sorry.
I just have one. I'm slightly shocked, but I'm really okay with it. We only had five calendar parking tickets last month?
That's not calendar parking tickets.
Oh, the parking violation? That's a different one? Okay. Just curious.
But it has gotten better.
It has gotten better. I see it every day.
How many did you get in July?
I haven't had one in three months. I've only had six.
New record.
Three my wife, three me. It's not all me. Throw her right.
Family affair, okay. Thank you again, Chief Maston. We'll move to fire rescue EMS monthly report. Chief Manasa, please.
Thank you, Mayor. For our report for the month of July, we had six fire department call-outs, most of which were in the city. We did have one house fire, three commercial fire alarms, one grass fire, and one CO alarm. And then we did have one rural response during the, we did have some storms roll through on mid-July there, so in response to that. Our monthly meeting and training was on the 18th, where we had a regular business meeting. And then we took an opportunity, it was kind of a fun night for us. We stepped away from our fire training a little bit, and we rebuilt our mortar boxes that we used on the 4th of July. They were getting a little beat up, so we had kind of a fun night with the guys and rebuilt all those. Ambulance for the month of July, we had 84 911 calls, 35 transfers, and 119 total runs. Comparison of 18 comparing to 74 911 calls and 42 transfers for a total of 116 runs. Monthlys, or sorry, yearly total, year-to-date is notated on the right-hand side. We had our monthly meeting and training on the 9th of July with a regular business meeting, and then we did our IV training for the year for everybody. Now, any questions I can answer?
Questions for Chief Maston, from Chief Manasa, please? Lot of activity there.
Yeah, and of course, busy with the 4th of July. We took, we had a good night there, a good couple of days there preparing, and had a good turning, so.
Thank you on the 4th of July for the fire department EMS and all the activities that you participate in, because the, certainly parade and the children's races, very much look forward to by many, many people.
Yes, great turnout again this year. I'm always amazed at how many children on a race and that, so very good turnout.
Oh, thank you to all of the folks in the departments for their participation.
Thank you.
Thanks for the great report. Building Inspector Myers, any update? Thank you. We move to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. We move to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I would just echo what Councilor Deech said in the success. This is the first cleanup day that I have participated in, having been in other activities on those days, but it was very, very interesting, a long line of citizens that brought items to be cleaned up. Also, thank you to the city crew that picked up the white goods earlier in the week. I don't know how many, and we got more white goods on Saturday also.
That's correct.
And tires and TVs, and it was, it was a busy one. Couldn't have done it without the assistance of the county, Wayne Fuller, Ben Friend and his team from the Friends Garbage, and a couple of our committee members, Ramona Johnson and Larry Davison. But I think the process that Counselor Jacksaw had set up previously, the site and all of that continues to work very, very well. So thank you to everyone. Councilor Deech, for your leadership on the Blight Committee this year and getting done what we did. Councilor Drowba, please.
I just want to make a point of something that we changed over the course of the last year that added to it this year. Somebody who does not live inside the city but has rental properties inside the city said he wanted to take his stuff to, from one of his rental properties out, and they said, "Well, you won't be able to do that. You have to have your driver's license or a water bill." And he goes, "Oh, the water bill's in my name." So he was able to go and utilize the thing, but he was very okay with it, but I just thought that was kind of funny, because now he has it in his name, he can use the service, so.
We visited, there was 21 homes that we visited on Saturday to pick up all kinds of materials. I think the, a couple of the couches that had hide-a-beds in them, they were a struggle, but we got them loaded, so. But it was a great, great day, and again, thanks to all the citizens for their participation in that, too. So I think the notices that went out and folks being on the radio, I think Gary...
Karan. Gary Karan.
Gary Karan and Larry Davison went on the radio, and so just all-around great effort to get that date to be a useful one and clean up part of the city. Thank you. With that, further from council committees or boards and commissions? Again, anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council on any matter? And in the, maybe just want to mention the dates again for the budget, Counselor?
He put me on the spot tonight.
In the committee of the whole meeting this afternoon, we just set the dates for budget discussions by the city council, which need to be done by September 30, so...
So our budget dates are going to be August 26 at 3 o'clock, on September 9 at 3 o'clock, and Thursday, the 19th, at 3 o'clock of September, and then we would be having a special city council meeting to adopt the preliminary budget on the 23rd of September.
So lots of, lots of council meetings to work on the budget and have that ready to submit to the Secretary of State or State Auditor, right?
Auditor.
State Auditor, thank you. All right, with that, you have the correspondence that was in the packet that's listed there, and the next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 19, at 4:30 p.m. There's nothing further to come before the council at this time. We'll stand adjourned. Thank you.